Regular meeting of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. Would Councilmember Fabian lead us in the pledge?
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the city clerk please conduct the roll call?
Yes, Your Honor, Councilman Rich Garth.
Here.
Councilman Martin Canaan.
Here.
Councilman Jonathan Fabian.
Here.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Here.
Mayor Ron Wornness.
I am present, thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to excuse Councilmember Christensen from the meeting this evening.
Your Honor, I would move to excuse Councilmember Christensen.
Second.
It's been moved in second, it is their discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
O's, same sign, motion carries. I declare that we have a quorum present this evening. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Your Honor, I would move to approve the agenda with the change of moving item thirteen to twelve and twelve to thirteen.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved in second, it is their discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
O's, same sign, motion carries. At this time, we have communication from the floor, citizens' comments. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the council regarding an item that is already on the agenda will be given an opportunity to speak later on. I would ask those individuals who wish to address the council at this time to approach the podium and identify yourself for the record. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the council this evening? Would the city clerk please read the consent agenda by title only?
Yes, Your Honor, approval of the minutes December 2nd, 2014, regular council meeting, approval of the minutes December 9th, 2014, council work session, approval of the minutes December 15th, 2014, finance committee meeting, approval of the finance committee recommendations for December 16th, 2014, and approval of the municipal court report for the month of November 2014.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion regarding the consent agenda.
I'm supposed to read the finance. Sorry. Your Honor, it's the recommendation of the finance committee for claims to be, or bills to be paid in the amount of $385,820.54, a loan credit card in the amount of $2,808.19, payroll and liabilities for November 26th, 2014, in the amount of $215,310.67, and manual checks in the amount of $20,100, for a total of $624,039.40.
Thank you. And now we would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I'd make a motion to approve those items.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
O's, same sign, motion passes. At this time, we're going to have the presentation to the family, and I'm not sure who will be receiving this, but it's the beautiful picture of Carolyn Whitman that has been a longtime employee for the city of Riverton.
We've lost a lot of good people.
Okay, agenda item number 10, Idea Incorporated. Presentation, sale of the Honor Farm property, city administrator introductions.
Yes, Your Honor, so we have a couple of Idea board members with us tonight. Kevin and Alan are from Idea Incorporated, and they were a part of our mission down to Cheyenne, and I believe Kevin is going to give us a little synopsis of what happened down there, and I'd like to turn the time over to him.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I'd like to give you an update from our actions over the last couple of months. Back in June, we'd given an update regarding the business council grant and the land which we're looking to develop north of town. And if you recall, this is the parcel of land, the green area there is the 302 acres of Honor Farm land. If you kind of zoom in here, it's between Webwood Honor Farm Road to the north and Federal Boulevard to the west. And so this is the parcel that we were looking at trying to acquire for retail development for the city to increase the tax base. Again, there's two parallel paths, as you can see. They were both approved, one in October and the other in December. I'll drill into a few details here. And first one is the business council grant. So we did receive approval from the Wyoming Business Council back in August, and also from the SLIB in October was the official approval for the grant monies that could be used. These stipulations, first is that we can make the opening bid only, so whatever the appraised value is of the land, whether it's 302 acres, 85, whatever number of acres it is, we can only bid the appraised value, nothing more. Anybody else comes in and bids over that, which we hope is what happens, retail development, then it will go to the highest bid. Idea has secured funds for the grant match, which is a 15%, and we do have those funds available that we can use to make this purchase if we end up making the initial bid and winning that. Idea Inc. has agreed that there'd be 100% payback on that grant. The way that would work is as monies are received from this land, so if, for example, we win the bid, there's nobody else to bid, we bid the appraised value and we win that land, we would then look to sell it, to parcel it off, to do what we can to get the return. And at that point, when the money comes in, first thing we're going to do is pay off our loan that Idea Inc. would have with the bank, then it would go dollar for dollar back to the business council until they're paid in full. And then the grant would be essentially terminated at that point. The other item on here is the contingency and development agreement between the city and Idea Inc. It lists different tasks that have to be done between the two entities. Funds would be given to the city, then the purchase would be made by the city, the deed would go to Idea Inc. to manage it, then when those funds come back, they'd come from Idea Inc. back to the city, and then they'd go to the business council, is the way that that would work. Additionally, the city would have to update the master plan, is part of the requirement of this contingency and development agreement. I think that pretty much covers that one. The second parallel process is the sales process itself. So this is from the Office of State Lands and Investment. And so we started up here back in 2013 and have moved it forward. I had the public hearing in September, board decision, final board decision was last week down in Cheyenne, as Mr. Weaver had mentioned, and we did get it approved at this point. So we are going down this path now. There's some nebulous items in there, which I'll cover in a minute, but it was approved, so we're moving forward. This is the timeline, and it shows you back in 2013 when we started, Idea Inc. nominated the land, went through the process. So we're down here, last Thursday, got the approval, and so we have, the next step is legislative action that's required, and that'll happen in the legislative session in Cheyenne over January, February time period. Then the auction, we believe, would be sometime around middle of 2015. We don't know for various reasons, there's a contingency in there, which I'll cover in a minute, but that's our best estimate. What'll happen for the auction is, if I go back here, there has to be an advertisement period, so there has to be at least 30 contiguous days of advertisement before it can go to auction. There's some other items that have to occur before that, but it would be at least 30 days. So this is the motion, again, there wasn't anything officially released by the OSLI, there wasn't anything on their website that I could find, but this is our interpretation of what we heard last Thursday, is that the auction, they approved 302 acres contingent upon the legislature putting legislation in place that would make the Honor Farm whole. Somewhat of a nebulous term, what does whole mean, is it equivalent acreage, is it equivalent value? That's being defined by the OSLI now, and it'll be worked at the legislature coming up in early 2015. If that passes, then the 302 acres would be auctioned. If it doesn't, then the fallback is that there's an 85-acre parcel, I'll show you that in a second, actually, we'll just go to, is this parcel here, which is really the frontage on the highway for retail development that would be auctioned. And they're subject to two contingencies. The first one is that the land must remain on the tax roll after it's sold. Two is that either $150,000 or the contributory value. And it's not fair market value, it's not acquisition value, it's a term that they use, how much does the purchaser value the additions to that land? So there's a contributory value for the modelers park that they're talking about. It could be more than 150, but it'll be at least 150. So whichever is higher will be paid by the purchaser to the Wyoming Modelers Park, help them move to a new location. And essentially, what it means to the city is that it's going to mitigate the city's obligation to move them to another location. I mean, we just, I assume you'd still assist in that process, but that this $150,000 they could use to put in a runway, to put a well in there, to run electricity to the location, et cetera. And there are several plats that they've looked at, now Stephen has showed them several throughout town that the city owns, and they feel several of those would work. So again, this is the 85 acres, looks like it shifted a little bit, but basically, there's a access 100 foot behind Walmart, and the reason we'd want to do that is so we can have access to run a road up through here, which would then allow you to develop this backside of the land if it ever got developed. So if we had 85 at first, if we do that, we'd probably put access roads in here and here, and on the backside of Walmart, so the back could be developed, it wouldn't be landlocked, is the plan with that parcel. Again, the retail development, if you look at our economic analysis, we feel that that would probably hold us for the retail development side for the next 10 to 20 years, is what we're estimating, again, depending on the growth rate for the city.
Can you show where the flight line is for the modelers park to the audience?
Yeah, so this section right here, this trapezoidal shape, is where the modelers park is right now, and their runways are right in here. So we'd be looking at moving this portion to another location. So some of the, this is the master plan. I think the one area they're looking at right now is down off of Smith Road over by the ballparks, is somewhere in this area, or perhaps down here, are the two areas that the modelers park would like to move to at this point. Quite a bit of work left to be done on this project, a lot of unknowns, but it depends what happens with the legislature as to whether we're looking at a major development or an 85-acre development. Again, when we start that advertising phase, what's critical here is to make sure we get as many people knowledgeable about the sale and get as many people as we can to that auction to promote retail growth for the city. It's a nutshell what we have. Okay, is that all we have? If there's any questions, we'll answer them.
Have any questions about?
Here's Martin has one.
Oh, yes. Could you step up to the mic, Mike? So that we can hear you.
Have they given you parameters on what it's going to be if it's 85 acres versus 305 acres, what the price will be? Appraisals both ways on that?
So we have the appraisal for the 302 acres, which is 1.662 million, okay? And then we're in the process of acquiring appraisal for the 85 acres. No, we don't, we're trying to run both paths in parallel, so in case it does go the 85, we can get it to market sooner than idea Inc.'s going to step up and pay for the appraisal. I expect to have something there.
Okay, any other questions? I would just like to thank Kevin and Alan and Stephen Lars for the trip down to Cheyenne. You had to experience it to appreciate it, and when Stephen was talking about biting his fingernails when they were making the decision, that was pretty accurate. I didn't, I wasn't sure which direction it was going to go, whether I wanted to jump up and stomp out, or get up and make a comment that would kill the deal, or what, but I'm just delighted with the way things have turned out. It's all been very above board, very transparent, it's open to the general public now to bid on this piece of ground when it comes up, and I think you've done just a wonderful job, Kevin, Alan, good job, appreciate it. Okay, that was, that was a good one. Agenda item number 11, ordinance number 15-001, second reading, repealing, revising RMC Title II, Article III, Rules of Procedure. Would the city clerk please read ordinance number 15-001 by title only?
Yes, Your Honor, this is ordinance number 15-001 on second reading, and ordinance repealing sections 2.04.090B, 2.04.130, 2.04.150 through 2.04.420, and revising section 2.04.140 of the Riverton Municipal Code pursuant to rules of procedure in the conduct of public meetings.
The Chair would entertain a motion regarding ordinance number 15-001.
Your Honor, I would move to approve ordinance 15-001 on second reading.
Second.
It's been moved in second, it is their discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
O's, same sign. Mayor votes aye, motion carries. And now we're going to number 13, Riverton Water Supply Change Order. Public Works Director report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Your Honor, city staff recommends the city council approve issuing change orders five, six, seven, to change, excuse me, to Jerry Bornhof Construction Incorporated for the Riverton Water Supply Project, a total amount of $100,540.85. To give you a little background, the city of Riverton has embarked on a major project to expand the Riverton Water Supply in anticipation of growth for the next 20 years. This project has been funded by the Wyoming Water Development Office for a total project cost of $9,200,000, with a 67% grant, 10% loan, and 23% cost-sharing finance option. The first phase of the Riverton Water Supply Project was to extend a 24-inch PVC transmission line from the water treatment plant to the Job Corps site. Phase 2A was to construct a new 2 million gallon concrete water tank on Airport Road and connect it to the new 24-inch transmission line. Both Phase 1 and 2A, excuse me, have been completed. Phase 2B consists of the installation of two booster stations, a wellhead station, some yard piping, SCADA upgrades at the water treatment plant for the new infrastructure. The first booster station moves water from the water treatment plant to the newly constructed 2 million gallon water tank on Airport Hill. The second booster station moves water from the new 2 million gallon, excuse me, 2 million gallon water tank to the Job Corps Center and existing airport water tank. The wellhead station is associated with well 17 and serves to convey water from the well into the city's transmission lines. The city has contracted with Burns and McDonnell to prepare plans and specifications for the Riverton Water Supply Project. It has also contracted with them to provide project management for the construction phases of the project. Now, the city is nearing completion of Phase 2B of the Riverton Water Supply Project. As such, and as part of closeout procedures, staff has been addressing items relating to processing and completing the project. Change orders five, six, and seven serve to address these items. Burns and McDonnell and city staff have not only reviewed the cost of these change orders, but agree that the change orders are necessary for the success of the project. As an aside, historical practices have been to really review and issue change orders near the end of closeout procedures of projects, therefore, that's why we have three of them coming before you tonight. The primary reason being that anything over $20,000 per the city's purchasing policy requires city council approval. Moving forward, we find there may be better ways to address these change orders, specifically not waiting for the end of the project to address many of them, but rather addressing them at the time of need and getting the appropriate approval, whether it be through the city administrator or the city council if necessary. Now, to talk about the change orders, to give a little background, since there was a substantial delay, excuse me, I have to enunciate a little bit better for you, since there was a substantial delay for the completion of the 24-inch transmission line associated with Phase 1, to when the pumping facilities of Phase 2B were installed and connected, it was necessary to, again, disinfect the transmission line and yard piping associated with the project. Obviously, this was to serve the health, safety, and welfare of our residents who are tied into our water system. It was also discovered during the scope of the project that some site regrading needed to be completed. This was due to the location of a shallow fiber optic utility and the location of the site's access road. As such, the city needed to adjust a fire hydrant to match the new grade. The additional disinfection and adjustment of the fire hydrant on the site is reflected in change order number five, which totals $20,699.51. To address the next change order, well 17 was drilled prior to both Phase 1 and Phase 2 of the Riverton Water Supply Project as part of the 2008 Level 2 study. A report prepared for this study was provided to Burns and McDonnell for their design of the Phase 2B construction associated with the well. And I guess to clarify, because I'm saying Phase 2B and Level 2, and it could get fairly convoluted, when monies are awarded through the Water Development Commission, they are oftentimes associated, in fact, all times, at all times, associated with different levels of the project. Level 1 and Level 2 specifically deal with the logistics and planning and design of the project. Level 3 is the actual construction. So when I mentioned the 2008 Level 2 study, that had to do with a lot of the logistical planning and design of the Riverton Water Supply. planning and design of the Riverton Water Supply. We are currently in Level 3 of the appropriation of the grant from the Wyoming Water Development Commission. Just a clarification point. To continue, when the contractor placed the downpipe in the well, a problem was discovered. This problem centered on a significant bend found deep in the well. Burns &amp; McDonnell therefore had to redesign the well with a smaller downpipe. Change order number six, which is for $30,853.34, covers the cost for the smaller downpipe and additional labor. Since the city had already paid for the larger downpipe and had it on-site with the expectation that it could go down well 17, the previously, already drilled well 17, we should and are looking for ways to sell the larger downpipe that was not able to be used. Initial cost estimates is that we should be able to recapture anywhere from $6,500 to $7,000 for this downpipe that was not be able, that we could not use due to its large size and the difficulty of the bend in the well, deep down in the well. The next change order, the final change order that we are requesting from council, has to do with Phase 2B of the Riverton Water Supply Project, more specifically, the erosion control measures associated with the phase. Erosion control was considered and designed for in the original design and construction of the project. However, after the several hard rainstorms we received early in the summer and last late spring, it was apparent that more appropriate and extensive erosion control measures were required on the site. And this is the site where the booster station is located near the new 2 million gallon tank on Airport Hill. In an effort to better design and grade the site so that future hard rainstorms wouldn't wash things out, the city and Burns &amp; McDonnell reevaluated the existing erosion control plan and located areas where additional riprap, seeding, and mulching should be implemented. This additional work is shown in change order number seven for the total price of $48,988. To talk about budget impacts, since change orders five, six, and seven described above just previously are part of the Riverton Water Supply Project, they consequently will be included with the above-mentioned grant and loan already procured from the Wyoming Water Development Commission. Therefore, the $100,540.85 total cost of the change orders will be broken down as follows. For the 67% grant, $67,362.37 will be funded by the Wyoming Water Development Commission Office Grant. 10%, which is $10,054.09, will be funded by the Wyoming, excuse me, Wyoming Water Development Office through the loan portion of the distributed funds. The remaining 23% of the change order total will be $23,124.40 and will be expensed from the water fund reserves. I would be happy to entertain any questions at this time, your honor.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the chair would entertain a motion regarding this Riverton Water Supply Change Order in order to get the discussion going.
Your honor, I would move to approve the change orders for the Riverton Water Supply.
Second. It's been moved in second, is your discussion?
Your honor?
Yes, Councilman Fabian.
Do we know what caused the well to be damaged?
We currently don't, your honor. It was actually a bit of an anomaly of itself, and I think it speaks to the prowess and intelligence of my predecessor, because the well was able to be drilled under the Level 2 portion of the grant provided by the Wyoming Water Development Commission. As I explained earlier, typically, all construction, including the drilling of the well, would have been covered under Level 3 of the grant monies. However, again, I think due to my predecessor's ability to work with people and also notifying a need and identifying the need to get that well drilled prior to construction, that well was drilled again in 2008. Why there's a bend in it, we don't know. I think it just had to do with the process of drilling the well. And, I mean, it could go from anywhere from hitting some hard soil that realigned the projectile as it was being drilled to anything else located hundreds of feet underground. Fortunately, we just, we don't know what caused it. Since it was drilled earlier in the phase, and actually it was part of, excuse me, earlier in the Level 2 portion of the project, it was also managed by a different engineering firm than the one we currently have under the Level 3. And so, there was no real expectation or way to predict that there was a significant bend deep in the well and that the designed downpipe just wouldn't work. We tried a couple of times, but, and to be honest, if we would have used a little cowboy grit, we could have forced it down, but the problem is we would have damaged the infrastructure in doing so. It wasn't a risk we were willing to take. Therefore, after looking at several options, the conclusion was made that we would just have to downsize the downpipe. So unfortunately, your honor and Councilman Fabian, we're not sure why that bend happened.
How deep was it?
You know, I should have that figure, but it's slipping my mind. I know it was a couple hundred feet down, though.
Okay. And will this cause a problem with the volume of flow by using a smaller downpipe?
Your honor, that's a great question. And no, we've had that verified through the engineering firm that the well will serve as it has been designed to serve our public.
Any other comments or questions?
Your honor?
Yes, Councilman Gard.
What subcontractor drilled the well?
Uh, this is embarrassing. I'm not sure. And this happened in 2008. I could find that out and would be happy to let the council know.
Your honor?
Yes, Councilman Gard.
There's no warranty to the well depth because we're out of the time. There was no assumed responsibility to the well depth.
Your honor, to be quite honest, that was not explored, whether or not a warranty was part of that. The well was functioning and drilled, and the bend deep in it, just to be quite frank, we didn't explore seeking a warranty or anything of that nature on the subcontractor.
Your honor?
Yes.
The well was tested and pumped in 2008.
Your honor, that is correct.
I think that would be worth going back and making that effort at least. You know, if you've got a product like that, that's... I'm not optimistic that you'll be able to sell the original ones and get that kind of money out of it, but it's pretty optimistic. Regarding the, is there any other questions by the council? It seems to me like the riprap, that $48,988 is a lot of money for that particular part of the project. I know the work that they've done around there, and it looks beautiful. They did a nice job, and it really does. It looks, it looks very nice. So, when they get a little landscaping and whatnot, starts to grow back, it really will look nice.
Your honor?
Yes, Councilman Fabian.
Does that $48,000 include the reengineering also, or is this just the work?
Your honor, that just includes the material and the work.
And this work was decided after the project was complete, and then it was discovered that they needed that mitigation for the runoff and whatnot. Is that my understanding?
Yes and no, your honor.
Or it wasn't designed into it originally?
This has been a project that has spanned several years, as you all well know. And so, the project was already in process this last spring and summer when it was discovered that the current design for the site was not appropriate to protect the slopes and to protect against washouts. And so, yes, it was discovered after the project had already began and while the contractor was on-site. It was reengineered, respecified, and completed with the contractor on-site.
Okay. I guess the thing that's the saving out of the $100,000 plus change order, why the city is only going to be on the hook for 23, is that correct?
Your honor, that is correct. And obviously, we are very grateful for the Wyoming Water Development Commission.
Right.
I think they do a great job statewide, and we definitely have benefited from that program, from that office, and from the state of Wyoming.
Your honor?
Yes.
How, how is this going to hit the water fund at this point? I mean, you know, we were worried about it from the, you know, yeah, from, just because of this project in general, does this put us in a bad spot, or?
Would you like me to answer that, or Butterfield?
You know, I saw a few of you leaning in, and I'll let you take it.
Your honor, we did take that into consideration for the budget amendment. The water fund is solid. And what I mean by that is we're able to support operations, we're able to keep our operational reserve 18.5% there. So, the money, big money, has already been spent. This is not going to have an impact.
Thank you.
Your honor?
Yes, Councilman Gard.
Which came first, the optics or the hydrant?
Your honor, could you repeat the question? I'm sorry.
Which, in change order five, was the optics line in place and then the settlement took it place after the hydrant was put in place, or vice versa?
Your honor, the fiber optic line was existing and already in place. It was not part of this project. It was mislocated by the utility company, and during the design process, as far as its depth, existing depth, excuse me, therefore, during the process of construction and the grade work, it was exposed, it was much shallower than what was designed or located from the specific utility company. And therefore, we had to kind of make a game time decision, change the grading, and the cost of which was having to add a riser to that higher fire hydrant.
Was there a settlement? Am I reading, I'm not reading that correctly. I thought that it was settling from that. One caused the other one.
No, your honor, you'll forgive the lack of clarity in the staff report, the associated utility line, it wasn't, it didn't have anything to do with subsequent settling in the project.
So was, your honor, was the fire hydrant added? Who added the fire hydrant?
Your honor, the fire hydrant was originally part of the project. It just didn't, well, let me rephrase that, your honor. The original design of the project for the fire hydrant was set at a certain elevation. That elevation was, did not expect that that utility crossing was so shallow. Therefore, when we kind of did our field change with the grading in order to have the access road, it was then discovered that the called-out elevation for that fire hydrant was not going to be sufficient, was going to be too low, therefore, had to be raised to the new grade that we established because of the conflicting, or I should say, shallow utility crossing.
Sounds like this project has been quite a challenge.
Your honor, it's been a challenge, but bring it on. We appreciate it. It's gonna be, it's needed infrastructure for the city. We really appreciate the fact that it's been built, that new tank, the new booster pumps. Yeah, I know it's a challenge for our water treatment plant staff, as they're getting used to their new toys, so to speak, but it's a definite needed benefit for our city, for the Job Corps, as the project moves on, as we attempt to loop some of the areas near the River View portion of town. So, yes, it has been a challenge, but I say bring it on.
I guess the thing that bothers me a lot about this whole thing is that the work's been done, been paid for, and now we're coming asking for approval of the council. And to me, that's not the way it's supposed to work. And I just wish that, and I understand, you know, it's a large project, and it's been multi-years, and, but I would have felt more comfortable if, if we had, if it had been brought to our attention as soon as it was known that there was going to be this kind of a change order. I just think that that's critical because doing it this way just doesn't send the right message, I think, to the public. And I'm sure that's something that you feel very uncomfortable with. I know Stephen certainly does. And, you know, so going on into the future, I just think that it's important that we have those guidelines and whatnot, we follow them, and we've got a beautiful product up there, but that's the only thing that I felt really uncomfortable about when I, when I read it. So, I don't know how the rest of the council felt.
Your honor?
Yes, Councilman Gard.
I would assume that, and I think everybody in the room would agree with me, that erosion around a water tank is probably not a really good idea. And if we're paying engineers to take a look at that, that should have been in the design of the scope of the work. And then with that said, we should be able to understand that it wasn't, the compaction levels weren't correct, or they were correct. We shouldn't have to wait for the first big rain to see if our tank stays on the hill. And so, I think that that's a, and it's easy from this point to say, well, you know, it's just, I'm always thrilled with the mayor's analogy that we only had to pay $23,000 out of our portion. All of it is our money. The money they're giving back to us, this great grant system that we all think is free money coming from some, coming from some great location other than us, is our money returned to us in a grant form. And so, you know, I, you know, I see some need for oversight, you know, what, why isn't the grade correct around a water tank? That's interesting to me. We pay all these high dollars, and we don't get the grade correct around a water tank, which it ought to be paramount. And I think that's obvious to everybody in the room. And I suppose going back, what was the total project in 9.2? Dollars, was it not? This isn't a, isn't a huge overrun, but once again, interesting that it comes at the end of the process when our hands are tied and who cares what we think? Money's been spent.
Your honor, I understand there's a high level of irony that we're asking for your approval after the action has already been taken. And moving forward, and I'll, Stephen, excuse me, Mr. Weaver, also of this opinion, we would rather find a better policy to get approval forward in a more organized fashion.
Your honor?
Yes, Councilman Gard.
All of these, you know, when you're digging around an optics line, like, the guys show up like ants on, on the anthill, and they don't want anything to happen to that optics line. And I understand in your clarification that it's too shallow, and that is a problem. Somebody, somebody didn't get that right. But unless it was directly in line with our elevation for that hydrant, we could either go over it or under it, and it shouldn't have been an increase in value of $20,000. It's interesting to me that we downsized the pipe, which we bought, which costs 6,500, we hoped to regain somewhere between $6,500 and $7,000. We go to a smaller pipe, and it costs us $30,000. And that pipe is to fill that tank, correct? That well is going to fill that million, that 2 million gallons of water.
Your honor, it will assist, but it will also go into transmission into the city system. We're able to fill the new tank from the actual existing tank at the water treatment plant. plant. The booster pumps are able to push that back and forth up the hill. So, it will assist with that, that is correct?
Well, and then, the erosion problem, and then, we're paying for the engineers again. So, you know, I don't know if there's anything we can do. I suppose a no vote isn't going to get the dollars back. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Mayor? I think Rich has beaten a dead horse. It's a mistake that we've seen many times, and the engineering was not to where we want it. So, we need better oversight, I think, in the future.
Well, I think on a $9.2 million project like this, it's easy to sit back after the fact and point out, you know, things, but to catch them in real time, you know, when it can happen, I don't know. It's something that I'm certainly not opposed to, the concept of more oversight. I don't disagree with that at all, and, but I don't. Okay, any other comments? Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor at this time. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mayor votes aye. Motion carries. Okay, number 12, now we're backing up to you. Resolution number 1306, fiscal year 1415, mid-year budget amendment. Director of Administrative Services report, please.
Yes, Your Honor. This isn't going to make Councilman Gardner happy either. I'm not trying to make light of our situation. Really, what has happened is that we had two projects, the Riverview Road project and the South Federal project, that were not under our management, and they were not under our fiscal control. So, when we received bills from YDOT, we paid them. We started doing that about three months ago, big bills, and when we got a bill for $900,000 from YDOT in November, looked at our cash position, now, you have to understand that that's general fund monies. We looked at it and said, well, we can't pay all of this in one month. So, we went back to YDOT and said, okay, we'll pay half this month and half next month, which is what we did. And I think I did inform you at one point that we did transfer from our operational reserves, I think maybe in a weekly update not too long ago. But, so, two things I'd like you to understand about this budget is that this money has already been spent. It's just a matter of appropriating that amount in the budget and being transparent to the public, letting them know that we're keeping tabs on our finances, we know where we are. Another thing, I spoke to the finance committee about yesterday, is we've had three public service directors in 18 months. That may not seem like a lot to you, but when we're talking about huge projects, when we had one director that passed away in the middle of that fiscal project, and we had two more, it's been a little bit of a conundrum to try to keep track of the monies. For instance, I think Stephen was called about a month ago, Mr. Weaver, about a month ago, from the county, saying, when are you going to draw down that $500,000 that we're contributing to Riverview Road? Nobody knew about it. That was with Mr. Urbikite. And so, it's just things like that that have happened. I don't think it's fair to point the finger or say that...
Were you happy to get that call?
Oh, boy. Boy. Yes, we were. We had stars in our eyes that day.
I bet.
So, I guess what I'd like to say is, this may appear like a huge budget amendment to you, it's probably the biggest one I've ever done in 25 years, when you're talking about 7.7 million. However, most of that is grant funds or funds that we anticipate bringing in. $500,000 from the county, $242,000 for a grant we didn't know we had on Riverview Road. We are recommending increasing the sales tax. Our sales tax was up about 10% a couple months ago, I reported. It's about 5% now. There's only twice in the eight years I've been here that I've ever recommended adjusting those sales tax figures. That's pretty risky, right? You don't know what people are going to buy, you don't know what they're going to spend. But I feel that we're at a point where we can say, okay, in the next six months, we're going to bring in enough money to cover what we anticipated bringing in in revenue. So, two things, projects we didn't anticipate fiscally that we need to pay for. Second thing is, we've always been able to maintain our operational reserves in the years that I've been here. I do want to tell you tonight that that is not happening as of today with the general fund. We have about $700,000 left in the general fund. Operationally, we need a little bit more than that. We don't have the 18.5% reserves, but what I will tell you with confidence, that that number will come up probably in the next couple of months. We know we're getting in mineral season severance tax in January. We know that we're getting a grant from the SRO position for $250,000. We know there's money coming in that we can count on. And when we project those operational revenues and reserves, we say that we're going to get this much money in over a year. When we spend that much money that we have in five months, there's no way we're going to cover that with our operational reserve. So, I'm very confident in the numbers. I know they seem big to you, but I feel confident that we've got it covered, and we're going to be just fine within the next two or three months.
Your Honor?
Yes.
If those bills had come in, say, in February or March, how would we be of 2015?
Your Honor, we would have been in a better cash position in February.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion regarding resolution number 1306, fiscal year 1415, mid-year budget amendment.
Your Honor, I would move to approve resolution 1306 for the mid-year budget amendment.
Second?
There's a motion and a second. Is there a discussion? I would just like to start off by saying that when I looked at this originally, and our fiscal year 15 budget for the Riverview Road was $336,000, and our expenses came in 1.2 million, I think. Oh, my God, you know, and so, that's what Courtney and the senior staff have been trying to deal with. On South Federal, the budget was $196,000. The expenses came in $646,000. And these are things that are out of our control. You know, YDOT tells us this is what we're going to do, and yada, 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 and it's pretty tough. It makes all of us kind of shake our heads sometimes, and, so, anyway, it's, I appreciate your certifying that you feel confident with this request, and are there any comments? Did anyone, yes?
I guess I would just ask about the development, because all you said is it's kind of out of our business, because you're just a state kind of running project. Is there a way to kind of... ourselves, or North Federal, so we don't get ourselves in this quite a mad situation for two years or so. Now, I mean, you know, you kind of get a projection and say, oh, not late, North Federal, we think we're going to budget this way, oh, not late, we've been heard in the past. Is there any method or any way to sit there and say, you know, in the next two years, North Federal starts to, you know, maybe, maybe, extra, and probably full well that our bills are going to be much higher, and expect that's...
I think that's probably the best, you know, suggestion, is to try to build a fund there, but when you've got that, along with the airport rebuild, you know, that's going to be coming about the same time, it just seems like there's a lot of these projects that are strapping us, and I guess you just say your prayer tonight, and, you know, save all we can, but perhaps Courtney or Stephen would care to answer that question?
Well, Your Honor, I think for us, what we learned, at least through South Federal, is, yeah, we're going to have to start budgeting more for, they give us those estimates, we get estimates, and we're going to have to put more towards that, otherwise, it's, but that doesn't mean we still have the money to do it, unless we grow a tree out in front that grows $1,000 bills on it.
The other thing is, YDOT has a very strong feeling that that's their highway, and they'll tell you how they're going to do it, and on, and on, and on. And it's kind of a Hobson's choice, I think, that take it or leave it. And so, we have to, have to work with them on it.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Then we have a project on the wastewater that we're going to have, coming with North Federal, front of Broderick's, and they're up to the Honor Farm. Isn't that going to be a, that's, that's a real, we don't really know what that's going to cost us.
Yeah, Your Honor, that's the stormwater, and, once again, that comes out of general fund, which is one that's always the sticky part, and we don't know the ultimate cost. It's probably going to be somewhere between $2 and $2.5 million. And, yeah, how are we going to pay for that? I don't...
And, Your Honor?
Yes.
That's 70% of the city's, according to the Highway Department.
That's right. 90.
Yeah, thank you. You're correct. It is 90. It was 90-10, was it not?
It's all of ours.
And so, with the thought of beating a dead horse, I think this is exactly what we're talking about. When we flip over and we do three, four times the length of the next federal project, and we get these estimates, that everybody can sit back and say, well, gee, we didn't know. Where are we going to get that money? That isn't, that isn't the way we, that's not budgeting. That's just, that's just writing a check for what we have left, and when your checkbook's empty, they're not going to like that answer either. I don't think this, this is, you know, once again, everybody wants this to be acceptable, but isn't, isn't acceptable business practice to not know where you're going to spend your money at, or how much money you need to spend before the project goes. And YDOT ought to have that conversation right up front. We don't, this is not an endless money source. We don't have the money to do it. And whether you think it's your road or not, and whether you're going to force a project to go or not, we need to know what we have to pay. And that's, that's only practical. And I think it's the same thing on the prior change orders. Why are we hiring engineers and then not expecting them to get the compaction correct? And then, when it isn't correct, and we do get a storm and it washes out, then we go back and fix it. We need to get a different engineer that can get compaction correct while they're on the job site. Wyoming, you know, the state of Wyoming demands that we replace that road on their schedule. Maybe we need to pass a bond issue, something, something that actually generates the dollars that we foresee that we need, instead of continually gutting the general fund. It can't be, it can't be a pleasure to receive that phone call, that, oh, $500,000 was also mentioned, that you need to send us a, tear off the top of your checkbook and send it in. Call. I don't know how you do business that way. Thank you, Your Honor.
Yeah, Your Honor, we are having a meeting with YDOT first part of January, just to have that discussion, because, I mean, I've already told them, we don't have this kind of money to sit here, and we've got to come up with a different solution that's not going to cost as much, because, I mean, we thought South Federal's bad. Over $2 million in general fund money is worse, so...
Well, I have a great deal of confidence in the future, that, you know, the North Federal will get rebuilt, and that we've got a lot of good people that are working on it, and even though we do have a few rough edges and sparks occasionally, I think it will work out on into the future. I know they've set that project back to, what, 2018 now, I think, so that gives us a little bit more time, so, but it's going to be an interesting challenge for the next council coming in. It's not going to be a bed of roses, but I think it's doable, and I think we've got a good team, and I think, I think it'll happen, so... Any other comments anyone would like to make? I realize that's not much of a business plan, but it's the best I can offer at this time. Okay, we've got a motion and a second to approve the mid-year budget amendment, and a second. Any other comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Sign. Mayor votes aye. Motion carries. Reports and comments, council committee reports, and council member roundtable. Councilman Larson, would you lead off, please?
All right. I have nothing, Your Honor. I've spoken too much already. Thank you.
Okay. Councilman Fabian?
The only thing I have is that they canceled the EMS sustainability meeting for December, and I don't know if they've rescheduled it yet.
Councilman Canaan? Councilmember Gardner?
Your Honor, the airport meeting's on the 19th. Nothing to report. Thank you.
City administrators report, please.
Yes, Your Honor. I'd just like to thank everybody that's participated in this long process of trying to get this Honor Farm property. I know that's something the city's been working on for 10-plus years and trying to work out something, and it looks like we're going to finally have some closure and get some property out of it, and so, I'd just like to thank particularly ID Inc. and Senator Beebout and Representative Miller, they were instrumental in helping us. They were down there all through the process and some of our meetings. So, it's been an interesting process, it's been a good learning, but it's, in the end, it's worked out. And then, finally, just wish everyone a Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Mayor's comments? I'd just like to mention that the donation that we made to the Landmark Community Center last Tuesday, I was at that meeting and made that presentation to them, and so missed our council work session, and they were very appreciative of that. We received a very nice thank you card from them, and I think it was scanned and sent out to the council. So, it was a small amount, but I think it's one that will really help with the relationship with our communities, and there's so many of these things that come together that all of the municipalities in Fremont County are struggling with, some of those at a lower level. For example, I remember going to Shoshone one time, and they were debating how they were going to fix a water line because their backhoe had broke down, and they were looking for, to borrow a backhoe from someone, and it was just, you know, something that we wouldn't even think about, and yet, for them, it was a tragedy. And so, I think we all need to try to recognize that we're in this together, and we need to work, anything that can help another community helps ours, the way that the taxes are distributed across the county, and so, I felt that that was a good thing, and I appreciate the council supporting me on that. I second what Mr. Weaver was saying about the work that's gone into getting that 85 acres. That's been something that the city has just spent a lot of money on over the years, trying to figure out how to get that grand, grand into the private sector's hands, so that it can be developed for the future. And I think this is a good, good way that we've done it. There's going to be a little bit of money in there for the modelers park to help them make the move, and so, it's a, it was, it was a good, good day for us, and I, you know, I was very pleased with that. I also have kind of mixed feelings this evening. This is the last full council meeting that this council will have. Our next council meeting will be January 6th, and that's where we will have the swearing in of the new administration and whatnot, so I just wanted to say thank you to everyone. It's, it's been fun. We don't need an executive session this evening, do we? Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.